United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need an hour time for you to overcome these things?
Yes, as has Mr. Backer. Mr. Balsack.
Dear Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mr. Sayad.
Here.
Mrs. De Pinto.
Here.
Mrs. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. McInno.
President.
Mrs. Rakuya.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
And Mrs. Backer.
Here.
First up, presentation on parent portal.
Mr. Eric Lockhart Malloy will do the honors of the presentation. He's going to give a quick overview of what we're going to see on parent portal. And if you need to, please move up so that you can see. It'll be easier, but this is what will hopefully be up and running in a month or so. Thank you. At the request of the administration tonight, we're going to preview our parent portal. The initial screen that you see here is the login screen that parents will be directed to when it goes live. From this screen, parents will be able to create their own account using their own email address and their own username and password. At the bottom of this screen, the district will issue access IDs for every student. That access ID will be the security key that will allow a parent to join a student or students to their account. Once the account's created, and a parent has a valid access ID for a student, they'll be able to log in, at which point they will be directed to a series of windows in which they'll be able to view information about their student or students. One of the core windows that is available is the student schedule. Current grades and attendance for the given year are available on the screen. The data that you're seeing tonight is not live data. It's a snapshot they can do due to confidentiality of students. But using this sample data, you would be able to see the student's schedule, what their current grade is in the given term. And if you clicked on individual teacher's grade, you'd be able to go down and see what the student got on individual assignments in that class. Additional information on the portal beyond grades will be in attendance history that will give a parent or guardian information on students absent, late, any events. Parents will have the option of setting up an automated email system in which Power School, the server, will generate various emails at different times. You can choose to have just a summary of information for your students' classes. You can choose to have a detailed report sent to you. And you have a variety of timeframes in which you can send it, including turning it off once a week, every two weeks, once a month, or a daily list. Any school that is choosing to use the school bulletin will be able to post public information here that any parent or guardian will be able to see. If you're at the high school level, you'll be able to see a graduation progress where your student fares in compared to what they need to do to graduate. Some basic school information, principals, attendance officers, email confirmation, phone numbers, quarter start and end dates. And then you also have the option to edit your own account information. This would include changing your email, changing your password, adding or subtracting students from your account. The core to the account is the parent's own email and username information, and then the access ID which is generated by the district. So overall, this will be the information available on the parent portal when it's ready for launch. That's all I have.
Does anybody have any questions? Eric?
Dr. Afana, was this live at this point, or is it going live?
Live.
Are students, are the parents able to use it already?
Not yet, no.
All right, when is it going?
We're hoping, Eric, I'll let you answer that question.
If the initial date for launch of the elementary school meeting is on May 21st, we're going to be, while I roll out the other schools, attending any initial problems or anything that we have to fix. The technology itself is ready to go. It's at the point of developing help documentation for the parents, putting together training scenarios with administrators and teachers. Technology itself is online.
Okay, that's great. Just want to comment that this is about time, and say this is a great tool for parents to have. My only regret is that I didn't have it, because me and my kids were in the school. And Mrs. Backer was the one that championed this and fought for the funding to make it happen. And it was a great tool, you know how kids are, you ask them how their grades are, oh, I'm doing fine. And I wish, like I said, I wish I had this, because when your kid comes in and says, you know, "I like a new cellphone, I want to go here," you pull out your phone, let me see your grades, and you have it there in real time. So it's really a good tool, and I applaud you for pressing on and getting this updated. Good opportunity to have technology is reached, say.
What about training for teachers? Is that being done now, or are they all stuff?
Most of the information that teachers or administrators need is already in place with their existing electronic grade books in the system. The changes between parent portal and what we have now is the addition of one button on their screens, something that we handled in a faculty meeting, and it is in planning at present.
Just one question about how it operates. The teacher puts an assignment, for example, a test, and doesn't put the grade in right away. Does the system exclude that, or does it show it as zero or no points?
That would be that one button that I was talking about, and teachers have the option to set when the assignment is published, on its page, a week ahead, a week after, when the grade is populated.
Excellent, thanks.
Thank you, Eric.
Appreciate it.
Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes?
The corrections, I recall them were put on the board.
If done, can I motion?
Could you just summarize those corrections? Because I don't, well, but then it's ones, I don't.
Under finance, between item number two and three, there was verbiage data that had to be removed.
Make a motion, accept the minutes, as opposed to the addition of corrections.
Mr. Balsack.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mr. Sayad.
Yes.
Mrs. De Pinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. McInno.
Yes.
Mrs. Rakuya.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
And Mrs. Backer.
Student council report.
As of right now, there isn't much going on, and it probably won't be for the entire month. So all that I'd love to report to you guys today is that April is finally over, and seniors won everything.
Mrs. Backer, I have a question for a student council representative. The people that showed up for legislators day, have you heard any feedback from the students that the people have participated in the elected officials, the movement, which Neskey, I believe, showed up there all the time, is there any feedback on the presentation at the people game?
I haven't personally been in one of those presentations, so I wouldn't know, and none of my peers seem to address me about this. Thank you.
Parent involvement report. Our last parent involvement council meeting was October 17th, and we discussed a few things. We talked about AYP and the schools in need of improvement, what needed to be done this year. We talked about ongoing training for the new hip law and school safety, but the main thing that we really talked about were ways to get more parents to the pick meeting. I believe there was, there were two maybe extra parents other than the usual two, or we had maybe four total. So we came up with a couple of things. We thought maybe some programs offered at the meetings, presentations that parents would find interesting, another reason to come out and learn a little bit more. Talked about changing the location to this area right here, a little more central in town, easier for everybody to get to, kind of right in the center of things. So our next pick meeting is actually going to be Monday, it's November 7th, at 6:30 right here. And the presentation, I believe, will be from the prosecutor's office on bullying, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, and there were a couple of different presentations we talked about, different issues with, you know, exploring children's interests, other interests that they might have. Cyberbullying was, of course, a big one. There was talk of a parent university. So we have a lot of ideas, so we're hoping this will draw some more parents out.
A question. Do the PTOs have a direct representative, or designate someone to come to each meeting?
That was tried actually back when, I know when I was PTO president and before me, when Laura was. The problem with that is, it was requested that a PTO officer or some representative be there, but usually the people active in the PTO are active so much that it was like throwing one more thing at them. So it really was tough to say, we need to have a representative from the PTO there, because you had all the PTO people who are at the school five days a week doing all these functions with the kids, now say, oh, I have to be at a 6:30 meeting. It, we tried, but it was just tough.
And give something away free.
That works. Cookies.
The meeting is here.
The meeting on Monday night will be here in the cafeteria. The Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office will be coming to do a presentation on bullying. Going to be sending out a parent link and some flyers, because we really like to get parents out. This is a topic, you know, that's in the news, and that we're dealing with in the schools, and the parents and children are dealing with it out in the community. So we really would like to get some people to come out and listen to this, because I really think it's something that will be valuable, and hopefully they'll present some good resources for everyone. And really, we'd love to hear suggestions on other topics, and we are actively pursuing having different topics at the meetings. Possibly in January, we'll have something about the parent portal to get the parents onto that, and really showing them and letting them see what that's all about. We want, we want all the parents to be involved. This is open to everyone, not just the parents who are there at all the PTO functions. It's really open to every parent, and it gives you an opportunity to really participate in what goes on in the schools. So we hope to see you all here on Monday night at 6:30 to listen to the presentation on bullying. I had to guarantee the prosecutor's office 15 people, so. They don't care who they are.
Did you bring Patricia?
Superintendent's report.
Buildings and grounds, there's no report. Finance, we have a donation of an air conditioner for a required special education classroom. Want to thank the parents for that, that did give that donation. Number two is some disposal of old equipment. Three, there's a change order of electrical service upgrades to the Wilson School, and there's a submittal of Form M1, which is part of the comprehensive maintenance plan. This is, five and six is just our internal controls. Basically, if you look at it, it's awash except for the bottom, which is at the high school. We had to add another part-time special education Spanish teacher at the high school because of the numbers. Seven and eight, Mr. De Anri will be, which is part of, you know.
Item number seven, the Board of Education hereby denies the Saable Education Association agreements number 14-2011 at Level 3. Item number eight, the Board of Education hereby grants Saable Education Association agreements number 17-2011 at Level 3. Any questions with section D?
I have a question. Originally way back, we said we increased from the budget eight teachers, so this makes it eight plus.
Eighteen.
Three quarters.
It was three quarters.
Two thirds.
Two thirds.
Yeah, it's four sixths. Moving to C, personnel, non-certified, unpaid personal leave, professional days. We have some employment of our professionals, which are about four or five, due to the excessive numbers in some of the classrooms and kindergarten, et cetera, and some of the special education classrooms. And by law, we have to get special education, our professionals into those classrooms, and some additional substitutes in regard to non-certified people. Any questions with that section? Moving along, D, some lateral transfers. Again, this is part of our internal controls. It's not like we're hiring anybody, moving anybody around, but because of the new requirements put on the business office, we consistently have to put a lot of this stuff into the board report, so that we track everything. Number two is a lateral transfer, once again, and a transfer of another special education teacher. This is our required SAT prep course, which is at no cost to the board. There's an unpaid personal leave, and attachment A, which is the large attachment. This is the start of a new year, which is in January, as far as the SEA contract is concerned, and subsequently, we're rolling over all the salaries as of January as per the SEA contract. So those will go into effect as of January 1st. Eight is the professional days that are listed within pages six and seven. Number nine, are salary adjustments. And the reason we have these people separate is because they are replacement teachers that are not here for the entire year, or they would have been on that addendum that you have there with all the other teachers. But these are not full-time teachers. They're, they're, their employment will end before June. Number 10 is a coaching position approval, and there's a few employment approvals. One is a returning, the other is the increase, and some substitutes. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. And 13 is an extension to, unfortunately, the elementary counselor is still not feeling well, and as a result, we have to extend her position as listed within the resolution 13. Any questions with section D?
Dr. Afana, on items one and two, are we going to be at a point soon with regard to position control whereby we're approving these adjustments prior to them happening as opposed to looking into rearview there, or I know that the process is new? Based upon the discussions we had earlier, I'd just like to have this so that if we're going to move somebody, or we're going to create a position or abolish a position, we do it before we.
Kevin, you know, I had a discussion, and I know Amityo had a discussion today, and I don't know how many times we've, you know, we try to stay on top of this, but for whatever reason, it seems sometimes to slip by some of the people. And as a result, you're right, we're trying to stay on top of it. We would prefer not to do this retroactively, or do this, you know, after the fact, 100%. And I'm glad you mentioned that, because when I go to my administrative team.
That's why I mentioned it.
At my administrative team meeting, I'm going to say, guys, please, help us out here. Because we, we don't know, if somebody moves somebody internally, Amityo and I don't know. And we just had that conversation with the administrative team a month ago. We'll have the same conversation again on Thursday. So I'm glad you brought it up, because it just gives it more teeth. And I apologize, trying to do the best that we can, but, you know, certainly, it's, it is a problem, and we're trying to fix it. Okay, moving to section E, policy. This is a first reading of recruitment, selection, and hiring of non-certificated staff. Forty to eleven, a little bit psychedelic, but everything can get the message. Any questions with that policy? And once again, I'd like to thank the Policy Committee for putting that together. Really, the board did a nice job on that, and I appreciate it helping me out. Any questions? With none, moving to F. This is, once again, our, the resolution on our hip recording, which is numbers 32 to 45. And then we have two other resolutions that basically affirm decisions of the past. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to G, co-curriculum. Approval of any faculty student volleyball game at the high school, another club. Truman School's doing their fall festival dance, which is November 18th. The middle school PTO has its vendor nights, excellent affair. I know that Mr. Pinto is part of that, I would assume, and pushing very hard for that night, so if you can make it, we would appreciate it, which is December 1st, from 6:00 to 9:30. What is vendor night? Can you kind of explain that? Is that sort of like?
Vendor night is when anybody that sells something or makes something can rent a table. Well, not really a flea market, I mean, it's nothing used or something at your garage, but anybody that makes something or sells something, you come and rent a table and sell your items, and people can come and do their early Christmas shopping.
All right, that's great. Thank you. And the auto class is going to a Universal Technical Institute on December 2nd. The musical performances, practices are listed in number six. Valentine's Day dance for Truman is listed as well. Wrestling team fall wash is October 29th. Wilson Elementary's holiday spectacular is December 9th. And we have, any questions with that section? With none, moving to H, support services, transportation waiver, and five field trips, and the senior prom accrual of buses. That concludes my report. Thank you.
I just have a, I have a question about the prom. Somebody had asked me, do we fund the buses because we require the buses? Is that the reason we do it?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
No, I think.
No.
I think that's incorrect, and the board funds it.
No, the board funds it.
Funds the buses.
The board funds it, I agree. Board funds it.
What are you talking about? The buses for the prom are funded by.
By the board, yes.
Correct. Okay. The commercial bus. Correct.
We fund the buses, yes.
Which is what it says.
Right. But you had asked a question.
Was not, that was not my question. You answered.
Sorry, Kevin. Uncle Fool. Well, no, Mike consented to be.
Right, I got it.
Your, your question.
Any other questions on agenda items before I open it to the public? I'd like to open it to the public, questions on agenda items only.
Barbara Kilcomins, 20th issue. I noticed, item number four, and since this has been such a hot topic at the last few board meetings, I was wondering what is the middle of the annual maintenance budget plan, and what does that entail? Since there seems to be a lot of things that hopefully will be part of this budget on maintaining the schools.
You're talking about the comprehensive maintenance plan?
Yes.
Barbara, that's a required report that we have to submit each year to the State Department.
So it's part of the budget, but is there any amount of money? How much do we expend, or?
It's not part of the budget. What it does, in detail, where your expenditures have been for a 10-year period, and it then asks you to anticipate what you're going to expand next year. So if you see, it's an anticipated budget for 1213. That is my estimation of where we're going to be come the following year by school, until the Finance Committee actually sits down and looks at the items in that maintenance budget, that's when it becomes the final budget. So it's not part of the budget process.
Well, a word of advice, I hope this board adheres and pays attention to maintenance. I heard Kevin mention he wanted a three-year plan. I mean, he's been a board member for about 15 years or whatever. I think our schools are almost to the point of decay, where the middle school has to have buckets all over the place and cover their equipment with plastic. Slaver school, they need windows, roofs. So I think this whole board better pay attention this time and be part of the process to include a good maintenance budget, because I think it's badly needed. Therefore, you don't have to come to the public with a referendum for mucho bus, looking to maintain the schools. I wish that you would go around and see other schools, particularly, and I point this out all the time, Madison Square High School, what a beautiful school, old, very old, but beautifully maintained, day in and day out. But I mean, I forget the year that it was built, but it's absolutely gorgeous, because they maintain it. And I think this is just, no reflection on this board, but so many boards have not paid attention to maintenance and have not invested in maintenance. You get to the point where you're band-aiding everything, you're putting a Band-Aid on here, a Band-Aid there. Like, I listened to the last three meetings, and I haven't commented, but if a sidewalk is needed in front of the middle school, the deplorable condition of a baseball field that took all the parents to come and the students, and that's an embarrassment, where all the other schools have beautiful baseball fields. Baseball is important, kids get scholarships and everything else. I don't want several just to be an embarrassment. So I think this board should pay attention to maintenance and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should speak? If not, can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's report?
So move.
Mr. Balsack.
I'm staying on section D, item seven, page five, Iker, and page six, Baransky. Yes, and all our items. I'll do that later.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mr. Sayad.
Yes.
Mrs. De Pinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. McInno.
Yes.
Mrs. Rakuya.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
And Mrs. Backer.
Yes.
Mr. Sayad, that was our junior assistant report.
Thank you, I've got a couple of items. The first two are informational, the last one I need some board direction on. As I mentioned at the previous meeting, a bill was introduced to make some changes to No Child Left Behind. The bill was 850 pages, and Congress was expecting a full analysis by everyone in eight days. National School Boards has prepared an analysis and has sent it over to Congress, and I'm just going to read a short summary in terms of what the bill is trying to accomplish. There are significant features of the bill that both support raising student achievement while eliminating serious counterproductive requirements contained in the current law. These include setting goals based on college and career readiness while eliminating the current AYP system. Two, strengthening the use of growth as one element in a set of multiple measures for determining accountability rather than relying totally on cohort cut scores for that purpose. Three, focusing improvement strategies on the lowest performing schools while eliminating the inappropriate labeling and interventions for strong schools, which under the current system inaccurately set up all schools for failure. Four, advancing the improvements of standards and assessments while not subjecting them to federal approval. And five, supporting improved teacher evaluation systems among other measures as an overall change in greater direction. So those are some of the things that the bill attempts to accomplish. There is information on NSBA's website if you want further details, including a letter with specific modifications that NSBA is seeking to the bill. The other piece of information I have, as any board member who's interested, there is a training session sponsored by the Somerset County School Boards Association on November 16th. It begins at 7 o'clock on the new anti-bullying law, and they're going to have several different attorneys, both from New Jersey school boards as well as private attorneys, speaking regarding the aspects of the law and educating board members on it. I will pass this around in case anyone wants to see the flyer and is interested. The last piece of direction I need, I sent out to the Board of Education a copy of the resolution on the fingerprinting and criminal background check law, which is going to appear on the agenda for the delegate assembly. One of the boards of education in the state, the city of Burlington, is asking the New Jersey School Boards Association to support limitation of the criminal background check law with regard to a specific length of time for an individual's background and consideration of the nature of crime committed. So in other words, if you committed a crime whereby you would be expelled or prohibited from serving on a local board of education today, but that crime was committed 30 years ago, let's say for a drug possession or weapons possession. ago, let's say for a drug possession, or weapons possession, or anything that would disqualify you from being a public school teacher, that you should still be allowed to serve on the board of education. The resolution subcommittee, which is a committee of school board members across the state, which prepares these resolutions for the delegate assembly, is recommending that the commissioner of education be the deciding party with regard to whether or not a, the individual has shown sufficient rehabilitation in order to serve on his or her local board. My question to this board is, first and foremost, does the board support the intent of the law as originally written, whereby if you are, if you do have a criminal background that would disqualify you from being a public school teacher, that you cannot at this time nor any time serve as an elected member or appointed member of a board of education? Let's start there.
I'm okay with that.
Absolutely. Anyone opposed to that requirement?
I have questions and objections to the fact that certain crimes that are committed that should disqualify a person, such as capital murder, rape, issues like that, that if someone's been convicted of some major felony or crime against society, that they should not be allowed, even though they've done their time, they should not be allowed to be involved.
Okay.
Right, so I just want to make sure, so the question is, should we, the board, be following the same rules and regulations that teachers are following?
Basically, yes. Or should there be some leniency, given the fact that we're not in constant contact with children? The resolutions that are being brought forth are proposing leniency, I need to know whether or not, whether I should support them or oppose them as the representative of this board.
I think we need to set an example and follow the same rules that we expect the teachers to follow.
And I would agree, and I'm glad that the board supports.
Looks good, yes.
I have that direction. I will oppose the resolution and any modifications. That's all I have.
Committee reports, technology?
We had a meeting on October 20th. Ms. Paul, Ms. Eichner, and myself, we discussed LightPath. We had, there's no more Verizon for internet. We were turning the phones over to voice-over IP as of the 21st. I believe that it's done already. We're good. The high school had a bit of a problem. The long distance was cut off for a while. They were only allowed to make local calls, and it was a Verizon issue. They weren't responding at the time of the meeting to calls. Have they, I don't know if they, no update on that yet. We're still looking into that. AT&amp;T is offline for long distance. Verizon still has our wireless. I know that Mr. Bishada has been concerned about the cost of our Verizon bill, but we have the iPads coming on now with the 3G, so that can add to that cost as well, even though we're cutting back in other areas. We had quite a bit of discussion about going wireless throughout the district, that some of our schools are not wireless, that we need to put drops in, into the different buildings, especially in Selover when there were meetings that are going on. We discussed that Dr. Alfano needs a new computer. Whether he wants it or not.
You like your apple too, E?
The middle school needs to get iPads online in NOOCs, and that was supposed to be that two weeks, so we should be getting them all online shortly. We spent quite a bit of time talking about bring your own devices to work, and some of, to work, to school. And one of, some of the things that we talked about was to start it off on a trial basis, perhaps from January till March, see how that goes, what problems come up, with just a few select people who are looking forward to doing that, with A Team approval, of course. And one of the things to clarify is, it wouldn't be mandatory that people bring their own devices to work, that it would be completely optional, and the teachers would have to be behind it. If the teachers did not want that going on in their classroom, then it wouldn't be there. It would be with their approval. The devices would be only under a teacher supervised by teachers. So even, they can't say, well, we're allowed to bring our own devices to work, so we're working on policy with that. We talked about submitting a budget, and Ms. Paul was going to meet the principals and supervisors and submit the budget to the finance committee. We talked about shifting smart boards, that we have smart boards, that people are making use of them, especially in the elementary schools, and to direct our money into the hands of the children. So laptops, iPads, NOOCs, other devices for our kids to use in the classroom that we're pretty good with. Everybody felt that we were fine with the smart boards. The wireless was the, servers, we are running out of space on our servers, and Ms. Paul's looking into doing virtualization to free up some space, especially in terms of storing our emails. And she's switching over to Windows 7. Everything needs to be done by January, and I think that was it.
Are iPads compatible with the smart board? Can you, can you run? Do we know that?
I don't, yes.
You can. You can run, you can run on iPad, and you will react to the smart board.
Okay. Good.
That's it. You said the, the books and the iPads in the middle school you're bringing online. Is the middle school wireless?
I think the middle school is wireless, and the high school is wireless, but the elementary schools are not. So we need to get, yeah, as far as I know. What about the UES?
The wireless.
So we have three schools completely wireless?
Yes.
And the other ones have no wireless capability?
But because of the way the building is made with concrete, sometimes there are dead spots where you can't pick it up. So that's an issue as well.
Okay, and I have another question. At the convention, I spoke to the LightPath representative, and he had told me that right now Serval should be moving at lightning speed. And I missed that.
I did tell him he should go to the superintendent's office and work his computer, because there was no lightning speed. And it seems to be a problem in all of Selover, not just in the superintendent's office. So is there a reason we're not working at lightning speed, and he thinks we're working at lightning?
It's not just Selover, it's actually across the district.
It's across the district, so.
Mrs. Backdo, I have an answer for that. While there at the convention, I got a chance to sit down and speak with Pro Media, our consultants who work on the infrastructure. And they're currently working with Mrs. Paul right now to do an assessment of our servers, because it seems to be that it's now, we need to look at our servers and how our servers are handling that speed that is traveling across it. So we may now have to go into another phase to actually adjust how we use our servers and mechanisms in that nature. So they are working with Mrs. Paul and doing a survey of our servers to come back with recommendations on how to get the LightPath to its optimum processing speed.
Has there been improvement at LightPath? Are we faster, just not at great speed?
Well, I know from speaking with the representative, they said when they tested the lines and all, all of the connectivity between the buildings and the LightPath outside of the building and all are moving at exactly the speed that they should be. The problem is now at the servers, coming in and distributing from the servers on end.
So it's a server, not an individual computer, like if you replace the PC with that?
There are definitely also individual computers that need to be looked at, and you refer to Dr. Alfano. When you have a computer that's roughly 78 years old, that processing speed is never going to make it to that computer because of the hardware in that computer. So you also need to bring your, all of your computers to the exact same point, which we don't have the funds for already now.
He's provided to us, though, a comprehensive solution as to what to do to fix this.
They're, they're working with Sandy on that, is what I'm understanding.
Because the other, I mean, I don't know, the other piece of this is if we can't get the speed, if, you know, our resources inside can't allow us to get the speed, and we don't have the money to get those resources to get the speed, then the other option is, let's look at turning down the connection coming in, because there's no sense in having that much speed coming in if we can't get it to...
I believe the goal is to get our servers so that we can optimize the speed that we have.
That would be my preference.
Not to go the opposite.
Yeah.
Quick question. On our smart boards that we purchased, how many of them are installed? And how many more have to be installed? Does anyone have an answer for that one?
It all depends on when you say installed, because what we're, we're going to discuss tomorrow, with it, most of the smart boards we order are on carts, so that's not an issue because they're movable and they should be out there. I don't know exactly where we are as to how many, but there have been requests from administration to start permanently mounting them. And I know I have some objection to that, because we purchased everything to be mobile and moving. We spend money on it, why are we going in a different direction? So my understanding is almost everything that we have is red up and running. Exactly what numbers, I couldn't tell you, but that's something we're addressing, to see where we're going as to the direction of mobile or permanently mounted, because permanently mounted means now we have to do a lot of extra work for power and things of that nature.
As a follow-up to that, and I proposed this to Dr. Alfano and the administration earlier, and I think we're at a different point now where we might be able to do it, especially with the fact that our smart boards are now mobile, and we've got a good number of them. We've got an in-house technology training person. We've got smart boards, they are mobile. Why are we still sending people out at $140 a clip to do smart board training? I have no problem having them use a professional day and being trained, but can we do that in-house and save the $140 a person with all of these mobile smart boards? Can we start to look into that? Are we at a point where we can do that? We started to discuss that. I didn't discuss that with Sandy, but that's something that you and I talked about, and I thought it was a good idea. I don't think we do that now. I think we do it occasionally. We do some of it after school, but not a whole lot of it during the day. And the utilization of that individual, I think I have to speak to Sandy to try to get a, you know, a better handle on exactly what you're saying. So I do agree with what you're saying. Right, again, I have no problem with the professional day itself and doing it during the day. I just don't want to spend $140 if we can train, you know, 50 people on one shot for somebody that we're paying already.
Any other technology questions? Buildings and grounds?
Would our building and direct, building and grounds director please come up to the podium, because you're going to be involved in this discussion.
Hello, all.
Dennis, good evening. First of all, let me start off with the baseball field. Dennis, could you inform the board and the members of the public what's been accomplished since the last meeting, please, as far as the direction that the board was giving, given to the administration?
Yes. October 20th, Mr. DeAndrea, myself, and JK met with Raymond Cipolino.
Pick up the microphone, somebody can hear you, please.
And he's our consultant that you guys hired to evaluate this field. And we spent about an hour, an hour fifteen minutes evaluating this field, and he gave us some suggestions. He suggested that we shoot the elevations of the entire field, infield and outfield. And also, take some soil samples of the infield clay mix and have it analyzed. And on October 25th, I sent the samples out. I just got the results back today, and we are waiting for a soil company to determine if the infield clay can be salvable to what degree. That's where we are right now. Once we get all the information back from Man Associates, who surveyed the field, they surveyed the field on, I believe it was October 21st, 23rd, somewhere in there. They're in the process of gridding the entire field, infield and out, because the consultant had some concerns with the outfield, creating a problem for the infield. There were some concerns that he had, that he wanted us to address, and he wanted to see this on the grid, which is the elevations of the entire field. Once we get that grid back, the elevations back, we'll send it out to our consultant, and he will make recommendations on as far as what we should do to that field.
And the rest that's under discussion, let me say that yesterday, October 31st, Mr. DeAndrea, Dennis, myself, Mrs. Backdo, and Mrs. Esposito took a tour of the Hazlet High School in Hazlet, New Jersey, and saw for, and I believe all board members received email, pictures that were sent through from Mrs. Esposito, from her camera, to all show the elevated solar panels that are in the parking lot at the Hazlet High School. I for once have no objection of doing this into our facilities, which leads into the next one of the Middlesex County Solar Power Agreement, which Mr. DeAndrea, you want to discuss that?
Sure. First, if anybody wishes, I did print out the pictures, if you didn't get a chance to look at them, I am.
Mr. DeAndrea, since the board already has them, maybe the public would like to see them, if you want to just pass them out. Does anyone in the public want to see them?
It's here, Ben. Last week, Mr. Papaglia and I attended a meeting with Hester McBride, bond counsel for Middlesex County, Jay Cornell from CME, who represents Middlesex County for the solar panel, and Jeffrey Meyerwitz, who represents the Middlesex County, in reviewing our solar panel project. When meeting with them, I sent you, sent out to the board the summary information. There were large maps of our property that Mrs. Backdo tried to confiscate on me yesterday, but I wouldn't allow her. That layout where we are. The biggest thing that came up during the conversation we had with them, and the reason we took the trip down to Hazlet, was a big portion of what they're looking to do as far as solar power through a purchase power agreement includes canopy systems on our property. What they are looking to do is make use of our parking lot areas, as the picture showed you, as in Hazlet, and start putting canopies, solar canopies over our school district parking lots and areas. The only areas that we agreed to as a committee that we did not want to see was canopies directly in front of the school that blocked the main entrance and things of that nature. That would only occur right now at the high schools, so we're going to tell them not to. But the main discussion that we first have to have is, that I need direction on, is, is the board in favor of moving forward with canopy-type systems in our parking lots to move forward on this? Because if the board is not in favor of canopy systems, we have to modify a lot of the plans that the Middlesex County representatives have done, because they have canopy systems at the high school, the Sampson Elementary, Allett School, and we're going to ask them, based on which way the board goes, to either expand upon that or not. So really, the first discussion, based on the pictures that you saw, is anyone objecting to having canopy systems put together in our parking lots? And you have to understand, you're probably talking this high school, every spot that you see a car, you can envision one of these canopies in throughout the whole parking lot. The same as the upper elementary school, those two parking lot areas, canopies all over, Allett, the front parking lot, the back parking lots. And included in their proposal are roof-mounted systems. The reason that all schools were not included is because when this initial proposal came out from Middlesex County, they were talking about only roof-mounted systems. Since that time, they've moved to ground-mounted or canopy systems included. So if the board is in favor of doing canopy and ground-mounted system, I would then request that they survey also the middle school, Eisenhower School in Truman, to see if we can include solar energy in those areas. So is anyone on the board against the canopy systems based on the pictures that we sent? I know we saw them, they're not in the way of anything, they don't stop any traffic flow, it probably would help maintenance of the parking lots, because snow would not fall all around everywhere, it would fall into the center, and things of that nature. So I guess the first question, is there any more?
And they are lighted.
And yes, they have lights on the equal, so it helps with your security and things of that nature.
I'll be honest, I'm not a fan of the canopies, and I've said this before. And I think, I looked at the photos, and I do thank the Buildings and Grounds Committee for sending the photos. To me, it gives it more of an inner-city look, and I just don't like that on Washington Road. Couple with the fact, they look really nice now, but when you put those things in, you're going to have to maintain them. So you look five, seven years down the road, that nice, pretty gray color is going to start to paint, it's just going to start to peel, and I'm assuming they're metal, it's probably going to rust. I'm just not a fan of the canopy mount systems, at least not, you know, as I said, like at the high school, where they're easily visible from the road. The roof ones, I have no issue. But I think I'm in the minority on that.
For the high school, we did ask not to put them in the front of the building. That was one of the requests, because the high school was close to the road.
So the side parking lot out here, you're not going to put them, or?
No.
No, the front.
You would see the side parking lot, all up to the bus compound, and basically pull back every weekend, county house.
Just not a fan. So for aesthetic reasons? Yeah, I just, and that, and that's... Yeah, I just, and that, and that's just the maintenance piece. I'm concerned what these things are going to look like, you know, five, seven years down the road, and the fact that we're going to have to maintain them and paint them.
Well, we are not maintaining it because it's a purchase power.
Mr. Syak?
Yeah.
The way that the contract, if I'm correct, is going to be written that we have no maintenance. We have, if a panel is broken or a pole is knocked down, it's not our responsibility. It's the contractor and the owner who are going to be responsible for all maintenance on these. The issue that we're talking about here is that we cannot put any more than 100% of our electrical use per building of solar panels on one particular property. Figuring this out, basically what we're going to do is cut our electric bill by about one-third, if not more, per year by using the amount of solar panels that will be installed throughout the district. That's the good thing about it. Again, the maintenance owners, we, what we receive is basically free electricity for them allowing, having the panels on the site, the S-Dracks, which the market has fallen through. It's like wet toilet paper, it's going to hold anything, bad analogy, but basically that's it, you know, and they're not going to receive that much for it. But again, you know, for the district, it's a cost savings issue to me. And as far as maintenance, again, we have no issues with the maintenance.
So we have a power source and we provide a covered part?
Yes, I just wanted to make one thing, and Tom, I would have to check. I'm not sure, Kevin's referring more to painting of poles when they need to.
I'm referring to paddles themselves.
I don't know if that's covered part of the maintenance. I know the panels are definitely are. As far as the aesthetic part that Kevin's referring to, that's something that I would have to ask him how to serve for that.
Well, this is just the preliminary, we can go forward, but you know, we haven't signed the contract.
No, I understand.
As we move forward, we can specify certain restrictions and items in the contract.
Well, I'm not sure if we can, because remember, this is run by the county. We would have to request of them to include it.
Right.
At their discretion, say yes or no. So, and is there any others, other than Kevin, that's not in favor of canopy or ground mounted?
I brought pictures in a couple months ago. I brought the same pictures in, so I didn't see a problem with it. With those pictures with the same school? Same place, yeah.
Okay, so what I'll do at this point is, the second question is, based on that, I'll assume that everyone is in favor of continuing to move forward with the Middlesex County Solar Purchase Power Agreement, and what I will do is ask them to also include Truman, Eisenhower, and middle school in that report, so we can continue to move forward and try to do solar energy in any area that we have available.
Okay, and did you, is there a reason Solover, just there's no space for it? You didn't mention Solover.
No, I just forgot about it.
Okay.
So let's include Solover also. I know the toughest part with, I can tell you the toughest part with the other buildings, Eisenhower, Truman, and Solover is that their roofs are not accessible to them.
Right.
So that may be part of the issue, but we'll talk to, I'll talk to Jay Cornell and see what's feasible and not feasible in that regard. The other thing, and I'll bring this up for discussion at another point, is the possibility of finalizing the middle school roof. I'm working with our auditors to get some definite answers on something before we talk about that, but we might be able to include portions of the middle school since we're doing that roof in this upcoming summer right now, so that'll be included in their calculation, hopefully, so we'll move forward with that. The reason that I needed this S-Drack is that they originally wanted a response from us from, from us by November 11th. They now extended it to November 15th. So I'd just like to get back to them and say that the board is interested and that we would like to continue to move forward. The one thing that I want the board to understand is that this is going out as a big, a large process through the county. We don't know our final numbers until the bids are opened and things of that nature. Tom being, using a conservative number, which is roughly five, five cents on our telewatch, which gives us about a third savings. We're hoping to see that. When the bids are open, we'll know better at that point in time the exact number. The other part is that there will be some type of financial commitment by this board at some point in time. I did ask that question at the meeting, and Dennis was with me, and they were not really indicating anything because they're not sure how many boards and municipalities are going to stay on board. So obviously, as this progresses, we'll start hearing about some type of cost to the board for all of these reports and studies that have been done. But I know that they also said part of it was their hope to incorporate it into the bonding or the purchase power agreement, so there is no cost, but cannot guarantee that at this point in time.
Again, what Mr. DeAndrea mentioned about the roof at the middle schools, through our attorney and through the auditor, which is the main person, we're going to see it for the beginning of the calendar year of 2012, 13, that we can, during, as we're doing the 41,000 square feet of proposal from the 752 grant from the state, that we can combine that to do that more roofing and have that online for the beginning of the 2012, 13 school year. And that's another roof that will be out of the way, and we'll move on with the general maintenance of the buildings after that. Continuing on with the Buildings and Grounds report, as you look under discussion, the expansion of the Eisenhower driveway. Again, I had a chance to meet with DeAndrea about that, and I brought up some issues, and Dennis, I asked him to look into the fact of expanding the driveway. What we're talking about is the front of the Eisenhower School. As we go down Ernston Road, you can make a left-hand turn, and you'll come around and there's like a horseshoe there that parents are dropping their children off, that, which are students of our school, and they're going out and tying up the exit because some parents want to make a left-hand turn. The principal there sent a letter asking if we could make a left and a right-hand turn. My question was, which you'll have the answer for me tonight, if it's legal to cross a double line making a left-hand turn out of Eisenhower to go towards Route 35, the answer is?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so that answered that, the safety issue is taken there.
Yes, and I think part of what the response was is that, because there are currently people already making the left, already out of there. The email wrote that based on what he researched, there are no restrictions for making a left-hand turn. That's how the email reads. There are no restrictions for making a left-hand turn. So, so right now, that's how the email.
The modifications of this exit will enhance the safety of the students as well as the parents in the morning exiting that school.
Correct. And the issue is brought up about cost of it, and I believe if you went on the portal, there was a letter from the principal, and there was also a quote in the letter.
A free quote.
For the financing, and the financing, if I'm correct, you can explain the financing?
Well, I'm more than proud to say, Mr. Fiore has done a wonderful job in his first few months here. He has actually worked with vendors to accept taking back supplies that were overstocked in his building. Some supplies went back over a year. So he was able to work with them to get credits on certain supplies that he returned. There were things in his budget that he chose not to do in favor of not spending the money. So the money, he has saved the money, I'm not going to say all 7, 800, but I can tell you, he's worked hard to save the money at the district, not buying things and actually returning things, working with vendors at his, at his own. Normally, I haven't met many principals that have taken that initiative to negotiate with the vendors to take things back. So to his favor, I think this is something that he's worked hard for, and I think he's deserving of it. He's done his labor, folks.
So the discussion right now is for the board, do we want to approve this and have this done ASP for the congestion of traffic and safety at Eisenhower?
I make a motion to approve the Truman School playground, Truman School park, private name.
Eisenhower.
Eisenhower.
We don't really, I don't have any, I just.
I think we did a motion.
I have a question. The proposal says it's only good to the end of October. I assume you think we're, this one is good to low bid, it's going to be fine.
Yeah, I'm sure they have some.
Yeah, the cheap one.
So there's a motion by Mr. Syak.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second there?
Helen.
Just so, it is basically approved the expansion of the Eisenhower School, the school roadway for the amount of 7, 800.
You can give a playground.
We're talking about that, relax. Mr. Bauta?
Yes.
Mr. Bishata?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBinta?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. McEnroe?
Yes.
Mrs. Crapp?
Yes.
And Mrs. Batko?
And just a comment, I do want to really commend Mr. Fiore for, you know, not only identifying the problem and identifying the solution, but identifying the means to fund it. I mean, I think that's a best practice.
Do own, but we let the borough use makes sense, but there's a possibility of putting solar there also, but we'll let him, let VA do the playground.
I believe it was about a month or so, Mrs. Crapp brought to my attention a conversation she had with someone from the borough in reference to Truman School Playground. I guess the longstanding myth in town has been that the board gave that property over to the borough. After meeting and discussing this with Jeff Petran several times, we had found, and we went directly to the source, the tax assessor, the tax map still has the property where the playground is as school property. So the borough never purchased it, we never gave it to them, and things of that nature. The reason I brought this on for this evening, for everyone to see also. Meeting with Jeff Petran, the borough has an opportunity to go out and buy playground equipment as an end-of-the-year clearance, more or less leftovers at a very discounted rate, but he has to process a purchase order by 15th, man?
That's correct.
November 15th. But he doesn't want to move forward, knowing the fact that this property is ours, there is no agreement or anything. So I'm just asking the board to, if they're okay, Mr. Petran and I will work on a formal lease agreement that both parties can sign and agree to, but he would like to put in the purchase order so that they can order the equipment, so that that land can be improved to be a playground. And the discussion we had today was also to maybe expand it to be a community park area. Since everyone was under the impression it's been a community park, they would take over and do the improvement. There was talks about the basketball area being improved, an area fenced off to make it more of a hockey rink or possibly a small outdoor soccer rink so that kids can play there and things of that nature. So what I did was, for the, for the board, I kind of put a line across, a dotted line to kind of indicate what I think is the area that possibly they would be looking to work out in the lease agreement, and then we'll work out all the other terms. I mean, it's interesting, for several, well, as long as I've been here, they've been cutting that grass up there as if it's been their property.
Right, I saw that they were maintaining it.
Yes.
We owned it and they maintained it.
Maintaining.
We want to keep that arrangement.
That's not going to happen.
Just tell them that the board agrees it's borough property, let them buy the playground, stop and then pull out the tax map.
Yes.
Well, the only issue that I have with that is if we do it in agreement, we don't know what's going to happen with National Leg, and there's no, really no property left in this town for to build other schools in the future if we're going to need to expand that we have in that lease agreement upon a necessary point in time that we take it back, that we can, if we have to, we have to add to Truman.
I'm sure that they would understand that, and those are all the terms.
Well, I mean, it's got to be right.
Yes, well, those are all the terms. I mean, this is just coming to light that this property that everyone thought was officially turned over to the borough has never been, so we're trying to work through it.
Well, the second thing is liability. If someone's injured on that property.
Again, that's all part of the lease agreement.
Okay.
And we're looking to formalize it because right now you have, if you were standing in front of the playground to the left of the basketball court, there is an old light fixture that apparently must have fell several years ago, and the base of it is still there with bolts hanging out of it and all. I mean, I've never actually went up to the playground. Dennis and I saw that, there's one piece of playground equipment, no one knows what it's even called. It looks like a hamster run, but we're not sure if that's what it is.
So what are you looking for from us?
I'm just letting the board know, if everyone's okay, I'm going to ask Jeff to purchase the playground equipment, and they'll install it sometime in just, hopefully in the year of, in the spring, and by that time, we'll work out the lease agreements and take it back. I mean, we've had it there, let's approve it, because I was, I was quite shocked to see the condition of the equipment up there also.
Yeah, objections there.
One last item, the electric in Wilson, as our crew completed the drops and the necessary works.
We are actually in the process, as we speak, wiring the entire school. We are running the branching through our classrooms as we speak. I can't actually tie the actually home runs, the circuits, into the panels. JCPNL is scheduled to come out the 10th and 11th of November and drop our new service. Once that occurs, then I'll energize the new panels that were just recently installed into the school. When the panels in the high, in the school is energized, then we can start energizing each individual classroom.
Could you mention about the three times, remember, we're getting eight, and actually we'll have enough for 1,200 service?
Yeah, what I did was, when I put the specs together for this particular project, we have an 800 amp drop in our school right now. I'm doubling it to four, we have 400 amp drop in there right now. I took it to 800 amps. With the contingency of if we ever need an additional 400 amps, all we would have to do is change the main circuit breaker downstairs in the main distribution panel and draw new wiring from that panel to the outside pole, and naturally, JCPNL would have to change the step-down transformers outside the school. But the school can handle 1,200 amps if we ever need it. I highly doubt it, but if it is ever required, way down line, it is there. We put, we, when we're done with that school, the entire school will be rewired. We are doing, my maintenance staff, your maintenance staff is doing all the internal wiring. We had an outside company come in, put distribution panels in throughout the school, which badly needed it.
Mr. Bishata, I have a question.
Yes.
The middle school patio, are we working on that? Because from what I saw, that teacher fell, broke rankle.
Yes, we are. We had, last week when land associates was out surveying the baseball field, they were doing part of their last workup for the bid specs so that we can go out early next year with that.
Okay, well, that's early next year. Are we going to fix where she fell?
Yes, Mr. Papaglia was working with his people to fix up the areas the best that we can at this point.
That will be.
ASAP?
Yes.
I mean, because you fixed that one part, but now she fell on the other part.
That will be replaced in the summer. That's one of the issues that the committee, when we had the tour of the buildings before, about two, about a month and a half ago, that we brought it to the attention, and that's something that was not budgeted, but will be fixed this year.
But even if we, I know we band-aided part of it, and that's fine, can we band-aid the other part before somebody else?
That's what they're doing right now. See, the issue with concrete is that with students in session, we can't jackhammer all that out for the concrete. We need about, not we, the contractor, whoever is, the bid, the lowest bid that's awarded will have to have at least a week to do the work without having interruption from students or staffing.
Do you have all the directions?
We're going to move ahead with solar panels.
Okay, Mr. McEnroe?
Yes. During the conference, stopped by and speaking to a company, a couple of the board members, called VerifyResidence.com. This is a company that will verify residences of students. One of the concerns I'm, and I've had this concern, you know, a year or two ago when we were the only district in the area that maintained full-day kindergarten, to take a look at our enrollment. Right now, according to latest enrollment reports, we have 521 kindergarten students in the district, and, you know, Eisenhower has a big part of those. This company, what they do is they match databases. You would give them the database that we have on student names and addresses, and they have proprietary databases that will compare information. For example, if a family recently applied for a credit card, you would put down your mailing address, and then they compare that database with the database that we have, and it will flag things that are mismatched, that you could begin to investigate. And the cost is $2 a student. So if you have 520 kindergarten students, let's say you randomly selected a portion of those, you did all of those, at $1,040, if you get one out of residents, that's $10,000. So I'm thinking this is, you know, no brain. I know there's ways you have to do, it has to be random, you can't, all these types of things, but I would venture to say that if we did something like this, we would get, find more than one. That's just my opinion. So I just wanted to throw that out there, for $2 a student. This is a company that, I forget the number, there were other board members, and I was talking to them, the number of school districts they have, and they actually have advertisements and live answering machines, and they give residents, stop residency fraud for $250 reward. and live entry machines, and they give, stop residency fraud for $250 reward if somebody identifies someone and is found to be valid. I mean, I, I think, you know, this has always been a concern, and not maybe it's a monetary thing, but just class size reductions. I know right now, how many kindergartens do we have in the classroom of balance?
Eighteen. And age one, about 25.
About 25, and that's a big class for kindergarten.
Yeah.
So, you know, for $2, and they turn, they turn a database on days, and then you can send your truant officer out to look at certain things. You know, I, I just think it's something that is available to us, and to me, it's always been a concern.
I forget, is that, we can do every kindergarten student, or we can only do random?
Well, we do every, everyone, that covers the random thing, I think, you know. You're not singling out anybody, if you do everybody.
Right, I can't single somebody.
Right, check locker checks, check everybody's locker, you okay? You know, that's just my recommendation. I'm interested in any board members think that that might be something we want to pursue, just to, you know, look, and if, if we come to find out that in kindergarten, we got a number of students, we may want to expand that to other grades, because if we can find one, then we pay to do residency checking everybody in the district, just from a financial feasibility. Are there any administrative concerns about doing something like this? Okay, so I'm going to just turn this over to you, Mr. BA, and here's the comfortable information, and maybe I'll ask a follow-up question next meeting to see how feasible this is, and, you know, I'm sure there's more information than he brought in, but I just gathered from the conversation with him. But they are respected, they, they named a lot of school districts in the state of New Jersey that they've worked with, and they've uncovered things, so, I know, I think it's due diligence on our part to at least take a look at it.
Mr. Backer, if you want to open it up. One, I had, I was at legislators' day, I had two classes, spoke to the students, and they had two complaints, both in our cafeteria. One was the pricing of the food, they think that the cost of meals are too high, and the second issue was some of the dishes that are served, we'll use that term, such as the Spanish, when they make tacos or whatever, evidently doesn't meet the requirement, the taste buds of certain people. They said it, we'll take it from there, okay?
Needs improvement?
It definitely needs improvement, and there are also, a lot of the students were upset about the pricing of food. They've never eaten on each hour, I guess. I've eaten out of the can. See, can't eat. Not the can.
Tell me about the- I also attended legislators' day. I actually didn't get any complaints about the, the food. I, I'd gotten them in the past, and the only year I didn't get a complaint about the prices is the year we reduced it by a quarter. They were very happy that year. The main issue that I had, and I was asking some of the students, was about their, their schedule, and they had indicated, and I spoke to probably about 80 students, and I would say about 10 to 15% of them, when they received their schedule in August, there was a problem with it. And when I mean a problem, I mean they had two gyms, or no lunches, or no sixth period. So that kind of confirmed my concern that we still got some work to do on the master schedule of the school.
Well, no lunches were set by Mr. Bishada's concern.
This is true. So all those that didn't have, maybe that's why they didn't have a lunch, they didn't complain to me about the lunch.
Yeah, works out well.
But it was, it was a great experience, and I would encourage not only board members, but also the town council men, men and women to also attend that next year we do.
Mr. McEnroe, do you still have your P41?
What's that?
Do you have a P41?
Yeah, I do. I absolutely do.
For your, for everyone's information, that's a little can opener attached to your keychain for opening C ratios.
Good stuff.
Are you done with buildings and grounds?
I'd like to open it up to the public now for any questions. Anybody wish to speak?
One of the questions I have for Mr., is the sloper school, when you were bringing up, Mr. Romillo, about leasing it and owning it, the, the ball fields, apparently that the Cerro Athletic Association uses, is that still part of the sloper school complex? And do we just lease that to the borough?
We actually lease it to the borough at the time of term, leases it to Sayo, AA, not the Little League.
Right.
Oh, but the school still owns the property?
Yes.
And it is still ours?
Yes.
So it's like a sublease?
Yes.
To Athletic Association? Okay, my other comment is about lunches. I think part of the problem, not for the high school, but elementary, that our selection, apparently, or our menus have not changed in more than 25 years, and that has been brought to my attention by grandparents. Grandparents were complaining, and they said when they put their children to school, they still had the same menu, and apparently, they still have it the same now. And they really complained about the choice of the menu hasn't changed. And with everything that's been brought up, I mean, Michelle Obama, and healthy foods and whatnot, I can't understand why we have not improved our menu and our cafeteria system. A retired teacher has several grandchildren in schools, and it's unbelievable. In fact, I have grandchildren, Millstone School System. I love to bring menus, and just to show you, compared, our school is really lacking in choice of foods. So I think you really should look into the cafeteria choices. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Allison, who next, Senator Fu Drive? A couple of things, going back to the buildings and grounds. When you guys did your surveys, did anybody go over to Eisenhower and look at the paths that we have? There's a path in back of the school that's just constantly underwater, and the students are supposed to use those to, they get dismissed out the back door, and they have to use the path to go out to where their parents are parked. So I just, I didn't know if anybody had ever looked at that. It's underwater right now, so it might be a good time of year to go and look. That, and I'm so glad about Truman School, so good for them with their playground, and I just wanted to bring up, I don't know if anybody knows that Eisenhower is going after the Clorox, the Paraboy Future for the playground? If we could get everybody to vote for it, you know, it's a $50,000 or $25,000 grant that we could get, we're trying to go for the playground, so if we could get everybody to vote for that. I have extra flyers if anyone would like to. So, you know, it's, it's definitely worthwhile.
I think, I think, we got?
Yeah. We sent it out.
I remember at the meeting, I remember-
Allison, this is so-
Yeah, because voting goes until December. And even especially for, for the high school kids, I mean, it's something they could, if the high school kids could get on board, you know, I'm sure they have cousins or brothers and sisters.
I did too.
So maybe if you want to give it to, you know, the students.
Oh, went to the principal.
So I'll definitely, I will email the link, so.
Thanks.
So we're trying, we, we went from, we were going around the hour, nine o'clock, you know, we're, as of this, as of 5:00 today, we're at 9:00, so, you know, we're not going to get anything for ninth place. So we're trying to do the kind, so.
Ninth at, how many, just out of curiosity?
Uh, in the plate, there's three categories, there's a plate category, maybe 500.
Oh, so, okay.
We have, we have-
That says you can vote two times a day?
You can vote by going online and registering, which I know unfortunately, some people have a hard time doing, and you can also text. Now, the problem is, there's two things up that say Eisenhower, you have to vote for the one that has the picture of the school in the back, not the one with the children that has already taken about 58 votes from us.
That's the picture here, that's-
We don't know how that got up.
That's the stair.
Right, the picture of the back of the school is the official one for, so, you know, if we get like a second place in that category, we can get $25,000 for the playground, so.
That's a nice, like-
Try it last year, we almost got, we're trying to get in this year, you know, hopefully, I don't know, Eisenhower's probably the last one to have. And, and, and it's going to help, you know, if we don't get it here, we're probably going to come back when you guys put the budget together and say, can you give us money for the rest of the school? So, you know, if you destroy the word, we're in-
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
I just have a few questions about Power School. I was wondering, just going by, like, the progress reports that we get, sometimes, some teachers, it's a full page, other teachers, it's only like two or three assignments. I was just wondering if there's going to be any sort of guidelines on what assignments will be included in there, and will there, is there any sort of a timeframe, you know, after a test is given, how long until a grade's on there?
That's what we're trying to determine now, how long, you're exactly right, we're going to post and so on and so forth. So that's the last part of it, which we're going to discuss at the 18 meeting. I, I think it's on Thursday, so we're going to try, exactly what you're talking about, we still haven't really figured it out yet.
Okay.
Those are the last things that we're doing.
Okay, like, like, so test quizzes, I mean, it was homework? That's the kind of stuff they're also going to discuss?
It, it, yes, I mean, you can post anything you want on there, but obviously, you know, there, there's, there's going to be some guidelines on how to do it. So you'll get that, and, you know, how quickly do you post, that's another issue, you know, we're going to post in a week, we're going to post in a day, you know, obviously, you can't get it up, they're going to have to have some time to be able to get their grades up and do what they ought to do, but not a month.
Of course, okay. The one other question I have is about the logins. It was mentioned about, like, there's going to be like a student login or whatever. Is there going to be separate logins for, say, divorced families?
I can't answer that question, I think Eric will probably.
Yeah, pretty much every student in the school will get an access ID. Every parent or guardian gets to create their own account. That access ID will be the same for everyone, but you only use that once to associate your account with your student. After that, your account is your own.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public wish to speak? If not, motion to adjourn?
So I'm moving.
Second.